Yes, regularly scheduled council meeting. And if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is required. The emergency mayor, which is standing, indivisible, literally, because that's for all.
Okay. We have a public comment period. And we have water for me. If anyone would like to come down and speak to the, to an issue. This is a eyes and ears only, we can't take action, but it's a great way for telling the council something that's going on. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Weed, I live at twenty-three Bridge Street. And this isn't really an issue, I just thought it would be a good moment to talk to you about what's going on with the Warren Fourth of July two fifty committee. I've given many town officials invitations to the event, and I'll leave some on the table next to the voting box on my way out. So we wanted to thank you in person for the grant that's been included in this year's budget. And to tell you that we will be applying for money from the state Rhode Island Fourth of July Commission. We've allocated money for towns and for different agencies around the state. We've also applied for a legislative grant through Jason Knight. And in addition, we received funding from a number of private and business donors. And the Massasoit Historical Association, Jay Berry Cultural Arts, and the Warren Preservation Society have made pledges for our efforts. So we wanted to invite you to the kickoff ceremony for the Fourth of July two hundred and fifty activities, which was September nineteenth at the library. On that night, there'll be a ribbon cutting for an exhibit about the soldiers and events in the Revolutionary War. The lyrics for the commemorative song written by Elwood Dominely will be performed for the first time, and there will be food. We hope you and all war knights will be able to attend a walking tour of houses that witnessed the revolution. Hear about a revolutionary soldiers and their families in a tour of the Kikamewett and North Burial Grooms. Don one of our T-shirts, seek out fire hydrants painted with the uniforms of colonial soldiers. Attend lectures, munch your way through the Johnny Cake May breakfast and one of our eight neighborhood dinners. Listen to a reading of the Declaration of Independence on the Fourth of July. And enjoy our big finale on the weekend of July eleventh, twenty twenty-six. When a bonfire, entertainment, fun for kids, and other activities are planned. These are only some of the events we have in the works. Once again, we're grateful your support and we hope to see you on September nineteenth.
Thank you, sounds good. And if everybody, I hope you realize what she's speaking about, this is our nation's two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. And Warren is participating along with the other cities and towns in the state, along with all of the states in the country. So we're giving it a best show we can, and we appreciate the committee's work. Next, we have Connie McGreevy, come on down. Hi.
Um, this is a public comment on ordinance O two. Motor vehicles and traffic prohibited on certain streets, lower lane. Both sides from Monroe Avenue easterly to the end of the road. I'm presuming this is so that the fire department vehicles can have access.
Correct.
Yeah, and it's, there's happens to be two metal poles just past the last house. That restrict large vehicles actually getting through there, and I'm just wondering if I can ask the town if they can remove those two poles.
We can take a look at them.
That'd be great. Second, uh, the minutes of the June tenth meeting update on Bay Road signage that states that signs have been put in place to reflect the town ordinance. I, as you know, have been before the council before in terms of this issue, and my husband has written and done a lot of research about it. I met with the town manager recently about removing a sign that was put in halfway down Bay Road on a steep hill, happens to be across from our driveway. And just mentioned to him, there's no way that I'm not gonna back into that thing, because it's, it's literally just the, you know, the width of the road. And so he had DPW move it, but they only moved it like twelve feet down, so now my husband's just gonna back into it. It's just, it's only four hundred feet of road. And it, it really doesn't need to be a sign there at all, it's, it's steep, it's slippery in the winter, even DPW staff have, you know, they slide around. And I think it's a hazard being there, and I just don't think it's necessary, and I'm just asking that it be removed.
We'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Next, we have Kathleen Hancock. And Lisa Martins, I presume, together and individually speaking. Oh, okay, hi.
She's got my back.
Okay.
Um, good evening, and thank you to the town council for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Kathleen Hancock, and I've lived at fourteen Washington Street since two thousand and fifteen. What I'm reading is a version of a letter that I submitted to the town administrator, slightly modified for the purposes of public presentation. I'm here to raise concerns about the persistent and intrusive noise coming from La Pinata Restaurant, located at the corner of Main and Crowe Streets. This isn't a new issue. I first wrote to the town in two thousand and twenty, and every summer since, the same problems return. Throughout the summer months, La Pinata regularly hosts live music outdoors, often amplified. And often with a deep bass that carries directly into my home and the homes of my neighbors. The restaurant's courtyard is recessed below street level, and the way the space is shaped creates an echo chamber that directs sound up the street. And into residential properties like mine. This isn't just an occasional disruption, it happens multiple nights a week, typically Thursday through Saturday. And it makes it difficult to work, to relax, or to sleep. The sound doesn't just stop at the sidewalk, it moves through windows and walls. I also want to address how this noise is measured and enforced. My neighbors and I have stopped calling the police department because we're told the music stays under the permitted seventy-five decibels when measured on the sidewalk by the courtyard. But that single reading does not reflect the true impact. The courtyard shape, as I mentioned earlier, projects and amplifies sound. And the bass travels through asphalt and concrete, creating vibrations inside homes, and the noise is far louder than the reading suggests. The current enforcement method is inadequate, and the policy needs to reassess how and where sound is measured. I also want to mention that on Thursday, August seventh, at nine thirteen P M, a couple of days after I sent my letter to you. I received an unscheduled call from a lieutenant Mark about La Pinata and the noise. There was no music playing at the time, and the call was unrelated to any active incident. The number was not recognized by me as coming from Warren Police Department, so I didn't answer and later heard the voicemail. Receiving a call well after business hours from the police on a non-emergency matter felt a little unsettling and a little intimidating to me. I want to stress that this isn't just about La Pinata. I've also heard increasing concerns from other residents across town about public concerts and other restaurants playing music outdoors without much consideration for how it affects those living nearby. We all recognize that Warren is a mixed-use town. I fully support our local businesses and understand the value and pleasure of outdoor dining and live music. But I also believe that those things must be balanced with residents' rights to enjoy their homes, something Warren's own ordinances are meant to protect. What's more frustrating is being told that the only way to file a complaint is to call the police each time it happens. This is a predictable and repeated seasonal issue, not a one-time violation. Relying on police calls puts the burden on residents and does not solve the root problem. This doesn't feel like a workable or respectable solution for us or for La Pinata. I'm asking the council to revisit the outdoor entertainment permit for La Pinata, and more broadly, to consider how Warren manages amplified music in areas where people live. There has to be a more thoughtful approach, one that supports business vitality without sacrificing residential quality of life. Thank you again for your time and for your continued service to the community.
Thank you, because you brought up the phone call. You stopped and telling us, like, I need to know, like, what was the police call about?
It said that they wanted to talk to me about the noise or the music at La Pinata, that was what the voicemail message was. But I did not recognize the number coming in, my phone's, and I can show you though.
Oh, no, I believe you, I just was curious that they called.
It's after business hours, how late was?
Thirteen at night?
Nine thirteen P M. Hi, this message is for Ms. Hancock, this is Lieutenant Mark from the Warren Police Department, just looking to get some information regarding your complaint about La Pinata. If you could please give us a call. And at the time, I, I just like, I'm, I'm speaking public, I'm making a public comment here, and I had not called the police at that time.
All right, good tip.
I just want to let you know that it was just one of those things where I wasn't expecting a call from the police department. And I'd already let you know that I would be speaking here tonight or reading a version of my letter. I have my first letter here, if anyone would like a copy of that, I could leave copies for you. A subsequent letter that was prepared in two thousand and twenty-two, and then today's letter, which.
I've spoken to Mr. De Sisto since you sent that first email to me, and we'll have this issue on the agenda in September. And we will be readdressing the La Pinata sound situation.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We'll be there, we'll plan to attend the meeting, so, um, thank you again. Too loud. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jenny Flanagan. Huh?
Hi.
I, I have no, I don't, we're good.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, this is something that Bristol's doing, and I'm hoping, as a pilot program, and I'm hoping Warren can look into it, which is food scrap composting.
The September agenda.
It is on, okay, I'm good.
Thank you, Nikki Piper, we're on it.
Thank you.
For those of you who didn't hear it, it was composting. Okay, so, uh, is anyone else here interested in a public comment? Okay, we're gonna move on. And next, we have a presentation from Kathy, Kathy Stanley, and this is the Town Energy Manager. I didn't know we had one. You're not our Town Energy Manager, are you?
I am your Town Energy Manager.
Really?
Yes, my name is Kathy Stanley. I'm the Energy Manager for the Town of Warren. Um, how do I advance those slides?
Are you really?
Yeah. Who knew?
Good to know. You remember this? Remember that? Okay. I'm telling you, you nominated it. All right.
There we go. I started on July eighth, two thousand and twenty.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And, um. Initially, um, I started working with Warren under a grant that was a Department of Energy grant that Nathan Cleveland was able to secure from, um, from, from Office of Energy Resources in Rhode Island. And his plan was to get as many communities together as he could who would be interested in working with an energy manager. So that we could demonstrate the value to having somebody in your court on these topics. And, uh, the initial plan was to have the Department of Energy pay for this, so it was no charge to the town to start. Next slide. So, we started off by collecting, I just, I'm gonna kind of zip through this kind of quick, I just wanted to give you some background. Um, we started collecting energy data from, uh, at the time it was National Grid, I had an intern to work with through National Grid. We began benchmarking our buildings, which means we calculated how much energy each building that we owned was using and divided it by the square foot and compared it to some national data that was available for other towns of similar usages. Uh, and then we began to prioritize some projects that we wanted to get done. And we took a look at any other previous energy audit work that had been accomplished. And our first project was a comprehensive energy management project for the wastewater treatment plant administration building. Previous to this work, there had been a rather major energy efficiency and operational improvement project, which I'm sure you're familiar with. That unfortunately, the energy efficiency work for the administration had to be removed because of budget problems. So we came in and we took a look at that building, did a full bore audit. And we developed a project that included a full lighting retrofit, there was a lot of lights in that building that were special because of the conditions of the building and the operational hazards. There was a boiler retrofit included, there was a building management system included that was a control system that would manage heating and cooling for the building. And, um, there was a cooling retrofit. Many of those rooms, the office, the lab, the upstairs conference room, and the upstairs break room were all cooled with window units, and we were able to put mini splits in there that also managed to provide some shoulder heat as well. So there were emissions reductions and greenhouse gas improvements as well. So, uh, we did evaluate the roof for solar, it was a very small array, it wasn't gonna be cost-effective, it didn't make sense to pursue it. And, um, total cost of the project was four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. We got forty-eight thousand dollars from National Grid, and we had a previous load, that's a misprint loan, sorry, balance of eighty-nine thousand that we were able to apply to the project, and then we funded the rest of it, three hundred and four thousand. With Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank that included principal forgiveness, which sounds like a grant, kinda. Um, we also worked closely with town administration to facilitate supply contracts for both electric and natural gas. Uh, we were able to secure a grant for an electric vehicle charging station at Town Wharf. Because at the time, National Grid had money in their maritime fund for E V charging stations. And I said, well, we're maritime right here, see Town Wharf, and we were successful. We got, um, a large grant, it's like twenty-seven thousand dollars they gave us to put that E V charging station, which I believe, from what I understand, is pretty well-used.
Seen it plugged in.
There you go. Um, that program of the Rhode Island O E R program ended in two thousand and twenty-three. But then, there was a federal grant that came out, and the federal grant had some funding to pay for your energy manager to work two more years. So, we dug in and took a look to see what we could do. Um, that grant, Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, also funded some energy efficiency project work that we needed to get done at the DPW desperately. We did some lighting improvements over there, we replaced some, I think it was oil heat, Brian? Oil heat with, uh, heat pumps, so we were able to eliminate some of the, some of that. And we improved some, um, comfort at the transfer station as well. This gives you an idea of what the economics of that project looked like, and, um, the savings, cost savings, it was oil, gallons. Um, monthly cost savings from the project that we, that we put in. And I think there was also, yes, a utility incentive as well. So, once that project was finished, next slide, please. We had a balance of fifty-six thousand dollars left in our grant that we haven't spent yet. So we did an audit at this building. And this building is in great shape, it has really new boilers and it has great cooling, but it does not have a complex controls system that allows your staff to manage the operation of the HVAC equipment properly. So we would like to install an energy management project here that will give our, uh, our staff the ability to really run the HVAC equipment energy efficiently and also provide more comfort for this building. So, those economics are as follows. Um, however, even after our grant and our utility incentive, we're gonna be left with an amount of about fifty-six thousand dollars. So, we went to Rhode Island Energy, and they said, well, we will put it on our on-road bill repayment plan, which means we'll take the whole amount of that money and put it into your bill, and we will bill it out for, um, I think, next slide, this gives you a better, yeah. So the whole project costs is one sixty-seven five, but the utility incentive at fifty-six and the grant balance at fifty-six leaves us with a balance of fifty-five, one forty. Um, the monthly energy savings of that project, we expect to be five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The on-bill repayment would go for ninety-six months, and it would cost five hundred and seventy-four dollars a month to pay for, to get that, that financing paid off. It's a zero percent interest financing option on Rhode Island Energy's bill. So that's what we're here to ask you for, is if you would approve this, um, for us to put this money on our bill. And, um, we believe it would be a wash from, based on the savings that, that we would expect to get from this project, not takes us up to speed to where we are now.
So we owe one hundred and sixty-seven. We put fifty-six thousand of our balance on that debt.
Yeah, if we do the project, it's gonna cost one sixty-seven. We haven't done it yet, we're waiting to see.
Subtract fifty-five thousand.
Yeah, we have, the utility's gonna give us fifty-six thousand dollars in incentive. And then we have the grant has fifty-six left on it, fifty-six thousand. So the balance that we have to find a way to finance is fifty-five thousand and one forty.
And that would be at seven point eight years.
The, the payback is seven point eight years, the on-bill repayment would go for ninety-six months.
And it would be about five seventy-four a month, but we're looking at a potential monthly energy savings of five eighty-nine.
That's correct.
So if everything that you have presented here goes right, we will be zero, zero.
That's correct, but we'll have a brand-new control system that will monitor our energy use, keep our building more comfortable, and allow for more efficient.
Questions from the council, Mr. Rego.
So we're gonna spend fifty-five thousand dollars to save fifteen dollars a month, and we're gonna start seeing a payback in about eight years.
Oh, no, you'll see the, the payback will begin, will start immediately. Once the, the control system is implemented, none of this, none of this obligation happens until the control system is, is complete.
But it's saying that we're gonna have a monthly saving of five eighty-nine, correct?
Right, the monthly savings is gonna pay for the debt, and then once the debt's paid off, it's zero.
The payment will be five seventy-four thirty-eight.
So we're gonna save fifteen dollars a month?
Yes.
But we're spending fifty-five thousand to save.
No, we're paying back the, we're paying back the fifty-five thousand dollar debt with the savings because of what we're implementing.
So here's what happens, Rhode Island Energy says, we'll pay the fifty-five thousand dollars to the vendor to pay for the control system. The control system gets put in. Once the controls are complete, and Brian signs off and says he's happy, then Rhode Island Energy pays the vendor off and begins to bill us a month, five hundred and seventy-four dollars.
I understood that.
For ninety-six months, until it's paid off.
Total cost of that five seventy-four for, uh, the seven point eight years is what, how much?
There is no financing charge.
Oh, I know that, there's a cost, we're paying.
Fifty-five, one forty, because we have to pay.
That's what we're paying. They're giving us the money for free.
Take back what you have, and you got fifty-five, one forty.
The new equipment is saving us six hundred a month.
Let me ask you. Let me ask you, I guess, let me ask Brian a question, since we put in that system, have you been monitoring to see what we've actually caught, what we've actually saved? Because what I see up there is estimated saving, I'm not against this, I'm just asking a question.
No, no, we haven't put it in yet.
For the Highway Department, you put in those systems, didn't you?
No, we don't have a new control system, no.
Right, but the project you did at the Highway Department, you did it for the purpose of more efficiency and cost savings. My question is, have you seen those savings on a monthly basis? Have you been able to monitor?
I got a couple of questions.
Mr. Hanley.
First one, this system for $167,000, what is it actually gonna do that programmable thermostats can't do? Is it because people are forgetting to turn off the lights in the air conditioning when they leave the building?
Programmable thermostats are limited in what they can actually perform, this is a comprehensive building control system. It would include a computer website, front end, for staff to be able to monitor all of your HVAC equipment all of the time by accessing this website. So, you would have a building control system installed through this front end, that's how you control it, is through the website.
But, Mike, what is it gonna control? Obviously, the heat.
All of the, it will pick up points that are installed throughout the building, the points will measure things like temperature, humidity, CO2. If this building was occupied, this room was occupied, it has a high CO2 level, you need to make sure that it's heated and cooled, if it doesn't have a high CO2 level, that means it's not occupied, those things automatically go down to a base level. There is an automatic nature of this system that keeps you from heating and cooling buildings that are not occupied, or allows you a higher level of heating and cooling if they are occupied. So, it's the ability to manage your space effectively. I've been in Brian Sullivan's office when I was overheated. I don't know if you've ever been in that situation, but I have. And I can tell you that if you had a building control system here, that would not happen, because you would be able to manage that, those temperatures much more closely.
The money that we're gonna be paying until this, the savings kick in, if they do? Number one, where's that gonna come from? And number two, should this be, in other words, instead of just rolling this over for the monthly bill, shouldn't this be a capital expense for the improvements?
I believe it's all-inclusive funding that they're spending upfront.
So, there's no money that you're gonna pay at all for this.
Comes from the Office of Energy Resources.
$89 a month until we start getting the credit, if we start saving them up.
That's correct.
We will be paying that.
But, there's no lump sum that you're gonna pay for this. That's what we're trying to accomplish with the on-bill repayment, is, the point of on-bill repayment is, the utility will cover that initial upfront lump payment, and then, as you save money, you pay for it out of your savings.
If the savings don't add up to these projected numbers, we're in a deficit for our monthly spending.
That is, if you're trying to determine where the risk is, that's where it is.
And that's where I'm coming from, because when you say monthly energy savings, how can you know it's gonna be $589?
Yeah, I can't guarantee that, nobody can, but we have a lot of experience with these systems and feel very confident. I think one of the things is, if Rhode Island Energy didn't think that you were gonna see that savings, they wouldn't be so happy to give you this money upfront.
Oh, they're not giving it, they're not giving us anything. You know, our electric bills and everything went through the roof, and I've just, it may be because of these things, so nobody's giving anybody.
Well, these incentives and on-bill repayment are paid from a line item on your electric bill that everyone pays. So, this is a really good point that you bring up. If you look at your electric bill, there's all kinds of line items in there. There's distribution charges, there's all kinds of stuff, transmission, there's a line item in there for energy efficiency. Every person who's a customer of Rhode Island Energy pays a part of that fund. If you don't use that money, you don't get the benefit of it.
Mr. Tremblay.
Thanks, Mr. President. Now, the current balance of the EECBG funds is $56,179.
Correct.
If we don't, if the council were to decide not to move forward with this proposal, what will become of those funds?
They go back to the federal government.
I see.
Could we spend them on something else?
Well, I could certainly look for something that would be limited to that. I could potentially break the controls project into pieces and say, "Well, we can't do the whole project, $167 is too much, you guys aren't comfortable with that." So, I could say, "Well, maybe we would just do the front end and integrate the boilers this year and wait and see if maybe we can get some more incentive money to do more a bit later." I've done that with town halls successfully. It took three years for me to do that with the Stoughton Town Hall, and we eventually got there, but it was a bigger building and the project overall cost more like $350. So, but, I mean, those are the kinds of things we could potentially do.
I see, thank you. So, if I'm understanding it correctly, the, about a third would be paid by the money from this balance?
That's right.
A third would be paid by the utility itself?
That's right.
And we would cover the final third through an installment plan?
Yes.
And the initial savings we would see would be about $589 per month, estimate. The additional cost would be about $570, I forget what it was, $574 and change?
That's right.
So, that's about a $15 reduction per month for that seven-year period.
Correct.
And then, after that, it would represent a $600 consistent saving per month, or about, what would that be, 36 per year, no, 72 per year, $7,200 per year? So, I'm curious, one last question is, when was the last time the system in this building was updated, changed in this way?
Yeah, so.
Ever, if ever.
Yeah, it's really interesting, you have new Viesman boilers that are relatively new, that operate great, they're all back net carded, so they're ready for a control system, which was never put in. There are some field controllers that exist in the, that allow you to integrate the other major parts, the major pieces of HVAC equipment in any major building are heating, cooling, and ventilation, mechanical ventilation. Mechanical ventilation is very important to a building. There are field controllers in place, but no one ever put in the control system to integrate them. So, somehow or another, the control system was value engineered out of this project. That's what happened, to the best of our knowledge, we weren't here, but that's what it looks like.
I think we had limited funds, and at the time, Ms. Michau focused on the boiler swap.
There were, there are some other benefits that I haven't covered. In my experience, working with other municipalities, if I'm going to get a building ready for any kind of decarbonization or emissions reductions work, or higher-level HVAC improvements, there are things I do. The first thing I do is insulate the building, weatherize it, make sure that we don't have a lot of airflow. The second thing that I do is implement a building control system. I can't update new equipment that is higher tech with more advanced control systems with a programmable thermostat, that isn't gonna work. So, I do actively, this is my agenda, look for opportunities to implement new control systems so that I can ready this building for something that might come down the pipe later on. And I have no idea what might happen in four years. I have, I just recently got a very large grant for a school that I started working on in 2023, I had no idea I was gonna be able to get that grant money. But, you have to be ready to get grant money. You've gotta prepare your buildings, you've gotta look for the future, you have to have audits done, you have to have engineering studies done, and if you have an opportunity to implement a control system in a building, you should do it, because the next thing will be easier for you to implement. So, that's my experience. But, I understand there is a risk, and that's, it's a real risk, I mean, you're not, you're not wrong.
Last question, the $589 figure savings per month, you seem to have a great deal of confidence in that figure, where does that confidence come from?
Experience. My Dartmouth Town Hall Energy Unit Index, that's the benchmark that I was talking about before, before I implemented the control system that I've recommended that we put in here. That building operated at about 60 MBtu's per square foot per year, that was its grade. Now, it operates at 49. And the only thing we did different was put in a control system, same thing at the Stoughton Town Hall. These systems work, they're not sophisticated when it comes to comparing them to really expensive control systems. We're putting in a Tritium Niagara Plain Vanilla Control System, it will operate your HVAC equipment, it's tried and true, it's been around forever, it's been manufactured by Honeywell, has the same cybersecurity as the DoD. I swear by it, because it's not hard, I can train people on it, it works. But, that's why I believe in the number.
I have no further questions, thank you, Mr. President.
See what Carrie has got going on. Ms. Cronin.
It seems like all angles and questions have been asked, and what I've kind of come to is that we can either just stay with what we're doing, not do anything, let the $56,000 go away and sort of leave that on the table, or we can move forward in the direction that it seems as though industry would say is the appropriate thing to do, and that you've, you feel very strongly about, you've been our energy consultant since 2020, did we decide?
Yes.
And we have realized savings and positive results from the programs that you've recommended to us. I feel comfortable with what you've presented here, I hear what our, what the other members of the council are putting forward as questions and potential risks. Everything is a risk, but it seems like if you're going to take a risk, it should be towards achieving something that will prepare you for the next good opportunity. So, unless there's something else that comes around here, I would be in support of this.
Mr. Hanley.
Once the system is installed, what type of attention does it need, daily attention? If it does, who's going to do it, or it's kind of a set it and forget it system?
It's a system that, it doesn't need daily attention, but it's the kind of system you would pay attention to daily, because it would tell you if there was something in an alarm state. So, from your home, you could tell if the boiler was in an alarm state, or if there was a unit ventilator that wasn't working, or a cabinet heater that had failed, or, so, it's not that it needs daily attention, it just saves you a lot of time in being able to diagnose any faults that are in your system.
And could this be monitored by more than one person, like the building official and Mr. Wheeler?
Absolutely.
Nice. So, now my memory has been refreshed, you're not just Warren's Energy Manager.
That's correct.
Manager, you are doing multiple, and we took you on to be part of your whole work.
That's correct.
Thank you, I've been here a long time that I've been here. So, Mr. Raygo, please, continue.
So, right now, we have $56 available for us, correct?
$56,179.
My question to you is, if we don't use it, we lose it?
Yes.
Or the second option to find something else to use it for?
I have.
Where we wouldn't have to take any cash?
Nathan told me the other day, I have until December of '25 to spend the money. So, get on it, that's what he said.
And is this the biggest savings component that's missing?
This is the thing to do, yeah, in my opinion, this is the next thing to do here. We've done weatherization, lighting's been done, this building, unless you're gonna tell me, "Oh, Kathy, we don't need to do this, we're gonna replace this building in six years." If you're not telling me that, then I'm gonna suggest that we put a good control system in here, because we need to be ready to take the next step in how to operate this building and be prepared for that.
What is the, what is the energy cost per month on this building?
I don't have that number in front of me, and I'm sorry, I probably should have.
But, it's a lot more than what it'll be after.
I know, it's right around $2,503,000. One of the problems we've had in town is, we haven't done a good job tracking what we're spending on these little costs, you know?
Yeah.
And it's something that, you know, we started to do, and that's why I asked Brian, where's the savings? And again, I have a hard time with that $589, but if these numbers are correct, you know, payback in a year does make sense to me.
And these, this is the new energy code, these are pretty much mandatory in any new construction, for public building, so.
So, I think Mr. Tremblay put it best in how he broke it down, it's thirds. I think it's a great opportunity for us to use the energy resource money and have our savings pay for the system, so is there a motion to support this?
This is just down for presentation.
Oh, and I vote not, okay, no action.
Presentation, we got the presentation.
I. I didn't notice that it doesn't say discussion and action, you're correct.
Is NBD2 what this proposal is?
Ah. Okay, so, moving to NB2, which I should have made the connection on. And we can move this item to where we have discussion and action, authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement utilizing financing available from RI Energy for a town hall energy management project. Okay, I looked at it all as one briefing, I didn't realize that it's NB2. Is there a motion to support this?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're looking forward to those savings and.
Wow, thank you so much, that's wonderful.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and I'll keep you posted, I look forward to coming back again every, once a quarter or so, and touching base.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have reappointments and Budget Committee, and Ms. Gallinelli has decided to not see.
We got Gary.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gary Marshall, yes, thank you. Our next presentation, thank you, everyone for pointing that out.
How you doing?
Good, thank you.
Kind of just wanted to give you a little, I've been here a month now, a little over a month.
Please.
Give you a little synopsis of where I think we need to be going. So, you can put the next one, yeah. So, right now, where we're at with the audits, the FY24 audit, they're telling us is done for the town. The only thing that's left is the single audit on the Opera Funds, because it's a federal grant, they have to do a single audit. They're wrapping that up, I'm hoping by the next council meeting.
Eric, you speak into the microphone for the people at home.
Yep, I'm hoping by the next council meeting to have them, the auditors here to give their presentation.
Nice.
So, we're on track there. The FY25 audit, we met with the new auditor, we're starting to do, there's still 90 days, we're still within the 90-day period, books haven't been closed on '25 yet, that stays open until the end of September, so they really can't start doing audit until after that. But, we are working with them to do a lot of the preliminary work, they're looking at our processes, and we're explaining how our management works and all that stuff. And we also are gonna be meeting with the Rhode Island Auditor General later this month, Brian and I. So, that's where we're at with audits. My main goal, I think, and what's gonna benefit the town the most, is getting control of the bank reconciliations. From what I understand, and I haven't confirmed it, but we're up to February or March with them, but I haven't confirmed that yet. What I'm looking to do is take control, start doing those myself, with a goal of getting caught up, and then, from that point forward, on a monthly basis, before the next month ends, the bank reconciliations are done. Doing that is gonna, is gonna allow me just to learn a lot about how the processes work. You can put the next slide up, actually. That's gonna get me a lot of information to refine processes within this, within the town, your cash handling, cash management, all that stuff, and how we handle expenditures. I put up payroll on there, that's not really gonna help too much with payroll, but we definitely need to look at how we're handling our payroll system. And this is all stuff, it's gonna benefit us going forward, it's gonna get us more prepared for audits when it's time, you know, knowing, it's gonna give us more confidence in our numbers.
Yes.
You know, knowing that everything got booked and got booked right, well, got booked anyways. So, I just wanted to bring that forward to yous guys, and kind of just let you know where I'm headed, or where I'm trying to head to town.
Great job, Gary, thank you.
Are we still using the outside vendor for reconciling, reconciling?
Yes. Yes, yeah, I spoke with him. Yes, yeah. I spoke with him. Um, he was supposed to come in last week, but I guess he got too busy or something. Um, I'm trying to get him in so I can sit down with him, go through where we're at and start taking over um the wrecks from him. Um, he's also does uh audit the audit prep for us, so. That'll be helpful for him, so.
Have you spoken with Mr. Sullivan about the new software?
Yes, so um we just went out to bid.
Good.
Um, actually, Edmonds called us right away. They were concerned why we were going out to bid.
Did you tell him?
I well, I I got some training out of him, so. They were
That's good.
Yeah, um, I told him that they should bid, you know, they should bid on it, and um so that's where we're at with that. So, yeah, so we'll we'll be looking at, you know, hopefully within the next couple of months.
So that's happening.
Happening.
Good news. Thank you.
Yes, so, okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Next, we have reappointments, and Ms. Gallinelli has decided to not reapply. So we
Motion advertised?
Thank you.
Letter of appreciation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, we still have uh three positions available on the two-fiftieth committee. If anybody's available out there to help on that, feel free to apply. And next we have Tree Commission and Ms. Sandy Simbabb. Is she here this evening? There you are. I didn't see you. Hello. Tell us a little bit about yourself and
Okay. Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Um, so I've been a Warren resident for sixty-six years, growing up in the North End, near Joey. Uh, then my husband and I built our home in seventy-nine on Pennsylvania Ave, where I still reside now. I retired from nursing a few years ago and never really had time to volunteer until now. A year and a half ago, I joined the Warren Hez Committee, and I've been attending the Tree Committee meetings uh just to become more informed of the environmental issues in town. So now I'm just, I'd like to re, I'd like to join the Tree Commission to help plant more trees in town and increase the tree canopy. Um, environmental issues are really important to me, and I just, I'd like to help give back to our community.
Great introduction. Any questions?
Kind of want to pre-choke. No, I I I go to those Hez meetings with Sandy all the time, and I see her passion and and uh and I think she'd be a great candidate.
So that's a motion?
That's a motion. I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the acceptance of minutes, uh July eighth, twenty twenty-five, regularly scheduled uh minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes? On the July eighth, twenty-five minutes and executive section minutes?
Uh, we have to do them separately?
Yeah. Oh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Trombley, on number one, and uh all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Trombley?
I'll make a motion to approve the July eight, twenty twenty-five executive section meeting minutes.
Second.
Uh, is um all in favor?
Aye.
Looking at my list, and then we have the acceptance of July twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to recuse myself. I wasn't there.
But it had stain. I was
Of stains.
And I'll make a motion to approve the July twenty-eight, uh twenty twenty-five special town council meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you on that. Next, we have the consent agenda, just P one. There are motion to accept.
Want to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving now on to ordinance, O one, chapter twelve, motor vehicles and traffic. This is the second reading, Article two, operation of vehicles, section twelve dash twenty-seven, one-way streets designated. Mr. De Sisto, this is for bookkeeping purposes, since we've already uh discussed these issues.
Yes, this is down for a second reading. It will add uh these two streets to section twelve dash twenty-seven for one-way streets designated.
And this will be
Say two or three?
There's three.
What about?
Sorry, three.
So this will be Company Street westerly from Water Street to Westminster?
Yes.
And Union.
Well, no, we're we're doing them, I believe, one at a time, or are we adding all three? Do them all as a group?
You can do them all at once because it's one ordinance, yes.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Motion to approve uh chapter twelve as a motor vehicle in traffic ordinance. Second reading.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have ordinance number two, chapter twelve, motor vehicles and traffic, second reading also. Article three, stopping, standing, and parking. This is uh section twelve dash fifty-eight prohibited on certain streets, and this is Laurel Lane, both sides from Monroe Avenue easterly to the end of the road.
Next, we already discussed this last month. I'll make a motion to approve chapter twelve motor vehicle in traffic, second reading, stopping, standing, and parking.
Just a quick question on this, Mr. President.
Please.
This uh came at the recommendation of the Traffic Commission, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, the the the
This is This is the Laurel Lane.
Issue was first brought up by Ms. McGreevy. We looked into it. Traffic Commission came back and recommended due to the narrowness of the road.
Right. I think it was ratifying something that had already been in place. I just wanted to make sure my dots, my Ts were crossed, so to speak.
Correct.
Yes. Correct.
Thank you.
Is that all?
Yes, that was all.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
This is still. And next we have petitions, request for a victualling license. Uh, oh, no, that's P one.
P two.
P two. No, I I was reading P one. Sorry. I forgot that we already did P one. Next, we have P two, request permission to close Lupa Street during the event. This is continued from the July meeting. This is from Saint Mary of the Bay Church, and we asked um the church to speak to the we asked you as the representative of the church
Yes.
to speak to the funeral home, and you brought back this. Mr. Ragel has a quick question before you
Tony, if you're a parishioner, do you have to recuse yourself from this?
No. It's a classic section.
Okay, so I'll read it. Wilbur Romano Funeral Home grants permission to Saint Mary of the Bay Aris to block off Luther Street on Saturday, October eighteenth, from nine AM to three PM. Please reach out to us with any questions. Sincerely, Erica De Nino, General Manager. So no one's gonna die a few days uh leading up to the eighteenth. You're good to go.
Thanks so much.
So wait, wait, I'm sorry. I mean, you're good to go from them.
Look into it to make sure it wasn't gonna be a safety issue.
We will. We already spoke with
Okay, great. Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you.
See you at the event.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have request for a victualling license, cottage license, and this is from Sprinkle Bar LLC, Victoria Afonso, one ninety-six Schoolhouse Road. And you're Victoria. Hello, tell us a little bit about yourself and what you like to do.
Um, all right, so I'm Victor Afonso. I live on one ninety-six Schoolhouse Road. Um, I've been in Warren for eight years. And um I decided to start this business from home. Um, it's just gonna, I'm just making um cupcakes, cakes, brownies, and cookies, you know, from home. It's good to have a taste from home, you know, and something more um healthy, I'll say. So, yeah, so that's why I chose to do this from home.
Okay, so Mr. De Sisto has enlightened me that now uh the law has been changed and that cooking from home is now allowed again.
Well, under certain exceptions, and that's under section twenty-one dash twenty-seven dash six point two, and it's known as the cottage food manufacturer. Uh, what this applicant has asked for, uh how she's described the business, not only in her application, but also tonight, is what meets the requirements for that. Can only be baked goods.
Yes.
Can't be refrigerated, needs to be registered by the Department of Health, which I
Which already did, yes.
which you've already done. So she hits all the marks on that thing. She will be subject to periodic inspections by the Department of Health for this, but it is lawful, and she can continue the business uh under this section of the law.
Great. Good. Any questions? Mr. Trombley?
Tony, when? When did this change take place under the law? Is this recent?
Uh, I'm gonna give you the date. Yeah, I know it's recent, but uh it was enacted by the General Assembly in twenty twenty-four.
Interesting, okay.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And discussion?
I just wanted to ask, so you are um preparing these baked goods and then you're selling them wholesale to?
No, I can't do wholesale, so it's just um see, you can order a cake from me, from me, you know? I want a birthday cake. I can make you a birthday cake, you know, cookies, you know, I can sell at events.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing uh this to us. Innovation. Next, we have a request for yearly entertainment license, Little Mars LLC, Malin Amalia, doing business as Cora's Coffee Shop.
Joe, I have to recuse myself. No butter.
Mr. Ragel is in a butter. Aye, come on down and tell us about your entertainment license request.
Uh, so Cora's is gonna be a coffee shop in Warren. Um, basically, I just wanna have entertainment license for live music, um, mostly during the day, because that's when I will be open. Um, eventually, I do wanna do a couple like nighttime events, but um for the most part, when I open strictly during the day.
And this is a solo artist guitarist, one or two people, small band. Now, how do you work a small band in chat?
Um.
I'm all right. Well, it says one or two people, then small band.
Yeah, it just
Beatles, a small band?
Trying to trying to cover all my bases, but um mostly just solo artists. Um, and then as far as like DJs and stuff, I really love um going to places where they have like uh DJs that do the vinyls. Um, so, yeah, just just that.
Which location?
Well, I'm gonna do it in Warren terms. This would be right next door to Andy's Bar.
Okay, got you.
So I'm a little confused. So you're gonna have your co, when do you, when are you gonna get o, open your business?
Uh, hopefully the beginning of September, hopefully.
So you're gonna have a little coffee shop. Somehow it just seems incongruous having entertainment in a coffee shop where one generally goes to have a coffee, maybe read a book or something like that, and then the whole live music and believe me, we get, I personally receive a lot of pushback and and concern about the noise and um, you know, fitting into a a neighborhood and not you've got neighbors
Yeah.
both residential and 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 commercial. So how does that, how does that work?
So um my reasoning behind it is because when I rented this space, I also rented a patio uh space in the back. So I have a couple of tables back there. Um, so that would be where I would set up the live music. And then um, like I said, for the most part, it would be during the day, so hopefully that wouldn't like interfere with my neighbors. Um, but, yeah, that's
Live music, not amplified, though.
No, I'd just be like a solo acoustic artist, um, because I have a patio space, so wanted to do like a couple of like weekend events where um like you can go and drink coffee and listen to music and stuff.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Trombley?
So I'm not as familiar with Andy's Bar as
So diagonally
I'm not either.
Diagonally across from Coverland Falls.
Yeah.
That is a pretty
Heading east.
That is a pretty small uh space, space-wise. Um, how, what is the capacity of I think we, it was discussed at a prior council meeting, but it's off the top of my head, I don't recall.
Um, they said about like, I I believe it was like uh twenty people inside and like fifteen people outside or so.
Okay.
Uh, like total thirty or thirty-five.
That's um, I, chief?
I believe.
Well, we're gonna ask the chiefs if they remember. If not, they'll be revisiting. And
I I I think the the other question I had is, so uh what are your hours of operation? Well, propose?
Uh, so I'm I'm thinking they're gonna be eight to three or eight to four.
Eight to three or eight to four. Okay.
Well, I think it's a a limited amount of hours you're gonna be there, and uh this will be, if we pass, it'll be contingent on the fire chief and police chief re-inspecting because they don't remember. Any other questions?
Are you, are you next door to Fairy Tea Room?
Um, I'm to, yeah, Fairy Tea Room, and then there's the video game store, and then I'm right next to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just I'm
Not direct.
Yes, our, you know, Fairy Tea Room has daytime hours.
Yeah.
And in daytime hours, different businesses, but
Yeah.
I'm just thinking of the harmony of the neighborhood.
Well, um
I'll I'll make a motion to approve the the uh entertainment license for solo artists, guitarists, small bands.
And I I usually hate to restrict, but um
Well, she said she may want to do a couple of events at night.
At night, yeah.
I don't really wanna restrict.
I don't either, but
That opportunity to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I- instead of restricting based on time initially, to restrict based on acoustic rather than making sure it's no amplified music as a potential compromise?
Well, she wants to have DJs too, so that would have to be coming out of a speaker.
That is true, yeah. It, how how do you feel about the distinction between uh
I mean, if if like the DJ thing is gonna throw it off, then that's fine. It was just like the my whole thing with the DJ was like the record playing.
I'm willing to give you a shot. I mean, it it seems it's a a small space. We'll see how it goes.
Keep in mind that if there are, if there are complaints, and we will be addressing, I'm sure you heard earlier, we will be addressing next month just the noise ordinance.
Right, yeah.
We are gonna, we are gonna revisit the uh the legalities and how we how we can and can't deal with the uh noise ordinance.
Right.
And it actually doesn't have to deal with decibels, so.
Well, since we are revisiting.
Be aware.
Yeah.
All right, there's a motion, and there's a second? You made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Trombley, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we have uh P five, request for a Class F beverage license, Emily Williams. How are you, Emily? Come on down. Good, thank you. And this is uh at the East Warren Rodeo Gun Club, and this, the event is Reeds Across America Clambake.
Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about that and what you find out doing?
Um, so Reeds Across America, it's based out of Maine. It's a veteran nonprofit. I don't know if you are familiar with the mission at all, but you've probably seen the pictures of the Christmas or holiday reeds on the headstones at Arlington National Cemetery. Um, but this is Reeds Across America, and so they have partnerships or community work with all of the state veteran cemeteries. And this is my first year as the location coordinator for our Exeter Veteran Cemetery. Um, I've been kind of passed down the role from a few of my mentors because I found the program at Pontigan Set High School in Foster Gloucester, which is kind of a really big Reeds Across America program. Um, but we did quite a few veteran fundraisers as well, and we had done a clambake my senior year um with Chris Stanley, who was one of my teachers.
Wondering why he was Yes.
At Pontigan Gates, I said, Pontigan Gates and clambake, Chris has gotta be involved.
Well, that's where I got the idea. I did my first clambake with him my, was it sophomore year of high school, maybe? And we came down to Warren and we did it, and then he introduced me to um one of the clambakes that the fire department put on, and so I thought this was a great way to kind of combine all my experiences and then all of the Rhode Island typical experiences and put together a fundraiser and raise some funds for our veterans.
Kind enough to text me if I'm in trouble, so I didn't get the text, so I figured he was here on good terms.
Just gonna say, you're not in trouble.
Yes, so uh great event, great cause, great participation by our fire department, and uh go ahead. What are you gonna?
I'm not gonna use Chris against you. I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
There you go.
I will second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Hopefully I can be
Thank you.
Next, we have request for a Class F beverage license from Julie Blount. Come on down. And this is for the Warren Heritage Foundation. This is the annual gala.
Our eleventh annual gala.
Wow, all righty. And it's gonna be held at your shipyard?
That's correct. So we we try to um hold our events at different places in Warren, and this year it's Blount Boats, and um it's gonna be on our pier, and we're really looking forward to
I was wondering
showcasing our shipyard.
Sounds good. I've been to a, I remember, what, it was already twenty years ago when we had the party there?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Donation. That was in the
And we went on the um Harbor, Harbor Queen.
Big building. That was neat.
And uh, yeah, that was a lot of fun. There was an art exhibit in one of our hole shops, and uh it was totally transformed.
Are there any questions?
No. Are you combining uh
Well, I was
Do we need two separate votes on? I was gonna make different motions for both.
I was going to include them with two separate motions.
Okay. You could combine if you wanted.
Okay.
I, let's make a motion. We combine P seven and P eight.
There you go. Is there a second?
Um, no, because we wanna combine P six and P seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll join that.[1787.24] Okay, with the correction, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And next, Mr. Andy.
Make a motion, we approve P six and P seven.
All in.
The entertainment license and the beverage.
Correct. And there's a second from Miss uh Cronin. All in favor?
Aye, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So we've got uh Otis and the privateers. It's gonna be eighteenth century uh jigs and reels and good food. And uh tours on our tugboats. Um so lots to see and lots, lots of fun. So I, anyway, I have.
I'll be bringing Mr. De Sisto.
I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know. If you continue to do this without stamps. Julie? Continue to do this without stamps. Chris was sourer than you. Post office is. Go right out of business. It's spring.
Lovely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next, we have a request for a one day outdoor entertainment license from Justin Keating. Is Justin here? You're speaking and Justin's here. Okay, and this is for the August twenty seventh, Chomp Kitchen and Drinks. And I think that's a Wednesday.
It is a Wednesday.
I am reading correctly.
Yep.
And it's the end of summer session tasting.
Beer tasting.
Beer tasting. Tell us a little bit about the event.
We're gonna have a a couple breweries there. We're gonna be doing just samples of beers. Um we just wanna have a band there for a couple hours.
Indoor or outdoors?
Outdoor, facing the water. Um you know, we did have our entertainment license for a few months. Um we, that was. Decided by the town to be taken away, which was totally fine. We've um on our ends foregone even acoustic music this summer. Um hoping that we could get back in the town's good graces for special events like this.
Okay, I mean, I I think uh Wednesday night, six to nine, summer night, sunset, reasonable facing the water. I hope it'll be a successful event non-rain. Anyone uh have any questions? And I can't control the rain, but I.
There's nobody here that I can see who's uh in in opposition, so.
Okay.
I'm very happy to.
Awesome.
There'll be some music from six to nine.
Yeah.
Uh is there a motion? Miss Cronin made a motion. Is there a second?
I will say.
All in favor?
Alright.
Good luck.
Thank you guys.
Thanks y'all.
Next, we have. Request for a class F beverage license from Jemeth Rubio. How are you? Good, thank you. And this is for Hope in Maine, and this is also a Wednesday night. Is that the same night?
Yeah, four to seven.
Ah, it's gonna be a.
Can shoot over to Chomp.
Yeah, if anybody wants to come down before going to Chomp, we're.
Appreciation for the people at.
For the people and our sponsors for the season.
Excellent. Uh any questions? Says it all.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Rago.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Trongly. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you.
Correspondence, anybody have anything they wanna pull? PCWA monthly report, department reports, and the letter from the State of Rhode Island Traffic Commission. Regarding the town's request for stop signs on Vernon Street and Warren Boulevard. This is though, that's the one I wanted to.
Yeah.
So we will pull C three.
I kinda had a question on the, I think it was the building department's uh. Info here about the um short-term rentals, but I see that that is not here, so.
That's under the parliament.
We can take it up next month.
Or I can just call them.
Or you can call them. So we have uh the letter, and the letter says the following request was uh considered at the State Traffic Commission's April second twenty-five meeting. This was the request from the town of Warren for a traffic study to include, but not limited to. The installation of a multi-way stop at the intersection of Vernon Street and Warren Boulevard. Traffic study was conducted to determine the feasibility of installing a multi-way stop at the above intersection. Traffic volumes, site distance measurements. And crash data, data were utilized as part of a multi-way stop warrant analysis. None of the warrants for a multi-way stop was met at the study location. A rear view of the most four-year recent crash history indicated a total of one crash. Occurred in the vicinity of the above intersection. The crash occurred due to a single vehicle collision with an animal. As such, there were no crashes reported at the intersection that would be susceptible to correction with a multi-way stop. The site distance warrant is applicable when the site distance on the minor road approach. Controlled by a stop sign is not adequate for a vehicle to turn onto or cross the major uncontrolled road. Based on the site distance measured on Vernon Street and Warren Boulevard, this warrant is not satisfied. The volume warrant includes meeting required volumes for any eight hours of an average day. For the study intersection, none of the twelve hours of traffic volume data met the applicable volume thresholds. It is for these reasons, the STC did not approve the installation of a multi-way stop at the above location. However, intersection warning signs with Vernon Street. Placks will be added along Warren Boulevard for the eastbound and westbound approaches. To alert motorists to the approaching intersection with Vernon Street. Signage work will be completed by Radar Maintenance Division within the next six to eight weeks. Gee. We're gonna get signs on Warren Boulevard telling you that Vernon Street's coming up. That's what they think, not the cars going down Vernon Street that we would like to slow down at that intersection.
I kind of agree with them. Stop sign is not meant to control speed. Stop sign is to men- make people stop.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not, i- i- it does co- control speed, but that's not what they're designed for. I think we just, we got enough stops that we could build our own Christmas tree with stop signs we have in this town.
I know, but the traffic is fast.
Can I just ask this question of the?
Sure.
She comes seeing a lot more of those uh radar signs, the uh solo ones. Uh is that something that would work on Vernon Street if speed is an issue? Cuz I can tell you, as soon as I see the sign. I slow down right away. Not that I'm speeding, but.
Just admit it, speed it.
I I think it is a deterrent, so. I mean, they start up on Trail Street, as you know, DOT just, we did the road.
Can we request those?
We can make.
We can request it, right?
Is that, is that something that DOT would have to put up, or is that something we'd have to fund?
State road.
Okay. If we request it, that'd be great.
We'll request it. We'll have Mr. Sullivan and the chief see what we can do. So now we have old business, discussion and action regarding the repairs to the potholes at Hugh Cole and Kikimiu Roads. The Kikimiu at school, excuse me. And this uh was brought up by Councilman Rago. Do we have any updates for Mr. Rago and the council?
Well, the update is Friday and went up again for the eighth time and there was still potholes that.
Well.
You have.
We have the superintendent, we have school committee members. And I always forget your role.
Yeah, but.
I go down there anymore, I wanna be an employee in school.
Okay.
So what you see on this, on the front page here, this is the area that's going to uh be replaced. Next week, the milling begins. So next week, they'll be milling this red area and then they will pave that area before school starts. Um if you flip the page, they also identified some larger potholes in the areas that they won't be paving yet. They're scheduled to be paved next year, but they're gonna fill those major potholes for us. And then KMS will be filled by our team, so it's not asphalt. We use a. Aqua fault stuff, that's a bucket. It doesn't last long, but we continue to refill until that parking lot is done, which is scheduled for the following year. The district doesn't own equipment to fill it itself. Um you know, it's. So we have to wait for the capital plan in order to do it the right way. We just use the bucket stuff. But anytime there's a storm or bad weather or just wear and tear, that stuff doesn't last very.
Let me just say this. The amount of times I went up there, it would have been easier for me to get some gravel in the back of my truck and just fill it in myself. I don't think it's a really a major, major issue when it's been gone for three years. I mean, I've been dealing with it for four months. My question is, don't you have maintenance people that could have just put some gravel down?
So our maintenance staff fill those potholes regularly. They fill them at the beginning of the school year, and then we have the winter storms and everything happens. And in the spring, they're buying more of the aquafall stuff to refill. Unless you do it correctly with asphalt and go through the milling process, and do it just. With our weather, it just doesn't last. And there's a lot of traffic on that driveway there, so it it just. It's not equipment that our maintenance team has. Um I mean, we're fortunate. DPW in Bristol does our potholes in Bristol. We just don't have that opportunity here, so we have to wait until we have funding to pay for. For asphalt and to have workers come and do it. So we have it in our capital plan. They're gonna be doing the whole middle school parking lot. That just isn't scheduled to be done until next summer. And then the Hugh Cole parking lot also was going to be done next summer. But they're going to address, like I said, these major areas for us this summer ahead of schedule.
Alright, so, so these three here, uh which is uh right, right next to the playground.
Mm-hmm.
Those are gonna be done next week?
Yep. It's milling first, so next week is the milling and the following week will be the paving.
Again, I was kinda concerned. W- we give the school department, I think one point two one four million dollars a month and. When nothing was happening, it's kinda concerning to me, you know?
I mean, the cost just for that paving is hundreds of thousands of dollars.
But.
It it's not, we fill the potholes regularly and that's an expense, but there's only so much you can do without doing the whole roadway.
Mr. Hanley.
Uh this question is for our DPW director. Is there a more efficient way and better product they could be using for patching these to get a little bit more lifespan out of them?
So the Aqua um. It's actually pretty decent. It's a new product out there. It's pretty decent for quick patches. Uh the previous. Facility director, I'm sure if he gets here by then, but we did offer. Our trailer and operator, we worked it like, I wasn't gonna go buy the asphalt for them, but they purchased the asphalt. We bring the trailer in for them just because we do have a trailer, but. Uh I don't, I don't think he wants to do that.
Do you, do you have any idea what the actual asphalt would cost?
We, we can measure it. I don't know how big that.
I mean, are we talking ten thousand, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand?
It's eighty-nine, eighty-six dollars.
So maybe probably under five thousand dollars, you could fill those potholes right and get two years out of them. We can't figure that out.
Well, it sounds like we can.
No, you buy the asphalt and we.
Yeah.
Buy the trailer and the labor.
She's saying she'll be in touch with Mr. Wheeler.
Correct. We have a new facilities director. We're gonna make sure that we connect him.
They'll, they'll come up with a, with a. I'm very happy right now.
There you go.
We are gonna agree to do that to.
Well, this work is being done. The work that's on this map is being done by uh Bray, our construction company. So the mill, they've already scheduled the milling. They were actually going to start it last week, but we were wrapping up summer school, so we. Rather than.
Right, so do the big projects and then the little projects that you have.
So really, we'll just have the work at the KMS parking lot. There's just a couple of.
One other suggestion is, you're gonna have. Ten yard trucks full of asphalt there. What are you talking, maybe ten yards, fifteen yards? Maybe work something out. The guys that are gonna be there and say, hey, you know, it'd be even cheaper than sending somebody up to the plant to get it. Cuz you're gonna have these big, huge trucks bringing in truckloads of asphalt. Just say, hey, dump a little, you know, a quarter of a load over here and we'll rake it out. Might be another way to save even more money. The company that's doing the actual asphalt once they mellow. They're gonna be there with their trucks, say, throw two more scoops in there when you go to the.
I have an idea. Since it was my idea to call you and come in, because I knew that you would address this issue versus us sending letters and. Why don't you take the opportunity to contact Mr. Wheeler? As John mentioned, with this going on, maybe something can be hashed out. Like he's talking about, maybe not, but at least you two will be uh. Figuring out how to spend the least amount of money, use the equipment we own and repair the potholes to get us through the next two years. Until we have brand new parking lots and you can dedicate them to Mr. Rago.
Thank you. I'll say all the first part sounds like a plan.
You could put him in one of the potholes, it'll see you through some asphalt.
Thank you for coming, bringing all the heavy hitters.
Thank you, and I'll probably go one more time.
Billing next week.
Alright.
Be in the way.
Yeah, go, go, show support, Mr. Rago.
Thank you.
Next, we have discussion and action on the maintenance, cleaning, weeding and tree pruning on state and town roads. This is also an issue Mr. Rago brought up, and uh this is continued from the July meeting. Mr. Wheeler.
Yeah, we've been looking at ways we can properly afford this and make it happen. Um. A lot of the machines that we're looking at are just way too expensive. We talked about this already. So we have some other techniques that we're gonna use. Obviously, everything's gonna include some to, you know, sort of money involved. Overtime money. There's a lot of things you can't do in the middle of the daytime, just due to traffic and volume of people on the roads, so. Uh there'll be a lot of overtime kinda sprinkled in. We're. Got some plans in place and hopefully it works correctly cuz we can't afford the equipment that would be perfect for this, so.
So question about the equipment. So for years and years and years, we did it with equipment that we have. Is the equipment we have no longer suitable to do this, or what makes it obsolete?
Inefficiencies. Um I mean, hand pumps are not ideal for this. You're talking twenty-four lane miles of state roads. So walking with a five-gallon hand pump is gonna take a lot.
I've always remembered, even since I was a little boy, you'd have somebody in a pickup truck and somebody in the back of the pickup truck. And they'd have the spray in the back of the pickup truck, and that's the way we did it for years and years and years.
Yeah, we have a pump that can do it. Everything is generated as pumps. Equipment, it just all depends on what we're using. So one of the things we looked at was a. Made for this, but again, it was thirty-seven thousand dollars, so we're not gonna do that. Um the organic spray is a little bit more expensive than the. You know, harsh chemicals, which no one wants us using anymore, so you know, we're trying our best to make sure.
I don't, no, 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 no. I really don't care how you get them out. I just want them out. So. So uh so can we still use the old sprayers?
We have a plan in place for a sprayer, yes.
Okay.
It's, yes.
Okay, so Brian, how soon do you think we're gonna get started on this?
Well, I, we'll talk to the foreman when he's back in the office tomorrow. He wasn't in today.
Okay, and again, we're talking state roads and town roads, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we gotta start somewhere, so we'll pick the state roads for the start and move to the town roads afterwards, but like I said, there's a lot of. Time that's gonna be involved that, forty-six lane miles, well, eighty, ninety-two lane miles of town roads too, so.
They say the sooner you start, the sooner you get there, so.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Next, new business, discussion and action, allowing the town manager to work with the town's energy consultant. For the best fixed electrical and gas prices and execute a three-year contract. Well, uh Mr. Sullivan isn't here. Uh we do have a contract with, we are. In an agreement with the League of uh Cities and Towns, correct, Mr. De Sisto?
Correct, yes.
And our purchase is through that agreement?
That's correct. It's a, it's a uh group purchase, the cities and towns. Through the League of Cities and Towns, I did speak with uh Randy Rossi, who's the executive director. And uh CJ Donovan, who's the associate director today. They confirmed that Warren is part of that group. Uh that contract runs through twenty-twenty-six. I advised them that this item was on the agenda for tonight's meeting. They asked that uh they be consulted um before any actions are taken on matters of this nature.
And uh because of Mr. Sullivan's absence, we're gonna put this off till next month.
It's not that time sensitive? No, I don't think it's time sensitive at all.
Any action needed, or we just continue it?
I think you can continue it. Uh I just think it'd be a good idea if you could, in the continuance, direct the uh town manager to contact. Uh the uh interlo- the um League of Cities and Towns, uh so that we can uh get a full uh. Um explanation as to where we are with that contract.
Mr. Hanley, is that your motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we continue this till the September meeting and. Instruct the town manager to contact the League of Cities and Towns for this item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to NB three, discussion and action, requesting the Bristol Warren Regional School District Technology Program to build. In school year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, a wooden bus shelter for the town of Warren. It's too bad they left. Uh Mr. Trongly brought this issue up.
Thank you, Mr. President. So if, if, if someone's traveling down through the East Bay, through Wampanoag Trail, which goes through Barrington. And then goes through Warren, then goes through Bristol and Barrington, you'd find some very nice wooden bus shelters, all painted white because it's Barrington. Uh and then if you go to Bristol, outside Benjamin Church Manor, you'd find a very nice wooden bus shelter. It's part of. A sort of rustic New England charm that fits with our historic character and nature. And I find it just to be a a great way, one, to make, en- encourage folks to to use public transit. Who may otherwise not, but also to provide some relief during those extreme weather events, storms, snow, uh cold. What have you, and it seems to fit, I think, with our. Uh with, with everything that we're trying to do, especially in our downtown corridor. In, in keeping with that, I had this rendering uh done, uh which council I hope can see. Uh sort of in historic colors and and uh. Style. And uh my hope is to send that, with the council's support, to send that directly to the technology program. I don't know if it's still called the technology program, it might be called the architectural program. And request that they construct for the town, which they have in previous years for sheds for the recreation department and other such uh buildings. Um a wooden bus shelter. This would be sort of a pilot program that would uh allow the town to. Put, put one up and see how folks respond to it, and if it's popular, if it's successful, if it doesn't. to pu- put one up and see how folks respond to it, and if it's popular, if it's successful, if it doesn't cost anything. Then continue and, and continue until we have a good system of wooden bus shelters in Warren.
Where would you be placing such a shelter?
That is an excellent question. I've considered three different uh opportunities. I think outside of Mary Feekworth would be the proper place for this one, as it's a, a bu- a recognized Ripta bus stop. It's a reconno- it's very close to a community that uses public transportation. And it's ne- on town, town-owned property, so we wouldn't have to ask for any private easement. If that was not to the council's liking, uh, I also have a, a verbal commitment from Hope and Main. They have the Hope and Main markets that they would be willing to accept one as well. So there's a couple of different opportunities that we could have. I hope, I hope that answers that inquiry.
Sure, it's always important where they're gonna go.
Yes.
And uh, I believe with the program, we would have to uh purchase the materials.
Now, that's.
Which is fine, but.
I totally hear what you're saying. Um, now, my hope was potentially that that cost could be offset by seeking sponsors from businesses in town. Perhaps, wow, and such. Um, my, one of the ideas that I hope to have with this is to take the wonderful map that's made by Discover Warren, which shows all the different business locations and put that in the form of a wayfinding um map on the bus shelter. So that folks that come into town who aren't familiar with it can use that to find local businesses. And by having local businesses sponsor the construction, would not only offset the cost for the town, but also help economic development.
Well, I think that, and just my two cents, and I'll open up to the council, since they're going to be town structures on town land. I'm sure it's a sense of pride to have good materials that the town can purchase. It'll be in the next budget cycle. I mean, Mr. Hanley would look at a couple thousand dollars.
I don't think you'd have any trouble getting sponsors for that, Joe. You're not talking a huge amount of.
But I mean, if not, we're the sponsor. I mean, it's a town.
Yep.
I, I, you know, I, I, I think we always hit up our businesses in something like this.
Um, if we're gonna do it. Well, especially if you put like a little plaque with sponsors on it, it gives them free advertising. You know, I, I really think you'd find some sponsors for this without a problem.
I guess what I'm going at is if we don't, if not, and you know, the town is going to be the, the owner of these. And we'd like to have good materials and a, a good product. So, any other questions? And Mr. Hanley, thank you for that input.
So Joe, you said, is this, is Main Street, that's not town road, that would be a state.
Well, no, it's on private property.
See, the way, the, the previous problems with Warren's, the reason Warren doesn't have bus stops is because of the restriction of the requirements needed to have them. So we don't have a wide enough spot. Back when they did the Barrington project and they did the Main Street project, that was around two thousand one, two thousand two. Uh, it was brought up at the time, wow, we getting uh the bus stops, and it was brought to our attention. So, Mr. Tromley took that uh issue head-on and found out how to find a, a sol- a solution to the problem. And he's come up with a pretty good one. Townland adjacent to the bus.
If, if I may also add, just because the solicitor has given me his, his eye, uh, we did discuss, um, we will have to send a resolution to Ripta to request permission to, to put this uh up, if I'm not mistaken.
Excellent, correct. Once the arrangements are made.
Once the arrangements are made.
It's on town property? We'll see if part of their bus system.
I tell you, we wanted to put a doghouse on Mary Feekworth's front lawn. Will we need Ripta to approve it?
They could change the bus.
On a bus stop.
We'll call it a bus stop. We'll call it a tra- a transit shelter.
Now you're thinking, now you're thinking like a lawyer.
That's Department of Canines.
Okay, and I'm sure we'll have to have some coverage for our insurance as well.
Yes, okay.
All that being said, first task is.
I will, I will make a motion to send a request to the Bristol Warren School District Technology Program to see if we can get them to build a wooden bus shelter.
Is there a second?
Location to be determined.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Next, we have discussion in action, requesting a resolution regarding the Ripta service cuts. This is also by Mr. Tromley, although I do know that uh Ms. Cronin was in the process as well. And I was, I mean, we probably all were when we read the paper, so.
Great minds think alike, as they say.
Something like that. Mr. Tromley.
I did use my legal mind to uh, to, to concoct this resolution. Um, and uh essentially, for those who, who may not be aware, the uh Ripta is facing a severe budget crisis. Which has, it has been announced um that there, there will be severe service cuts coming to Ripta in the near future, although those have been put on pause since this ice put in this resolution. But the proposed cuts, especially to the sixty and the sixty-one, which service our area um are, are devastating, because public transit is critical to so many things in our community for folks to u- to use public transportation to get to works, to medical appointments, to um to businesses for economic development reasons. And i- public transportation helps us in many ways, because we're trying to build more housing with the, the cost of housing being exorbitant, having requiring space for cars. Takes away from how it's based that you could use for housing, so we try to shift towards a transit-oriented development model. But you can't have that model without the transit to support it. We have act on climate mandates at the state level, which sets ambitious goals, and transportation is probably our first or second biggest cause of pollution in our communities. And then on a practical basis, if fewer people have public transportation, because it's not coming as frequently or as reliably. They use, uh, they, they get in their cars. And when that happens, that adds to congestion and parking problems, which we know a great deal about in downtown Warren. But especially for those that commute from the East Bay into Providence, going through the Washington Bridge, traffic is, uh, can only get worse. So there's many reasons to, I think, oppose the cuts that Ripta has, has suggested, especially in our, our area. And I'm asking the council to support this resolution, and I know it has come from, not only myself, but from other members of the council as well. That uh Ripta reconsider these cuts and try to find permanent sources of financing to make it uh, make it self-sustaining. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Uh, any questions?
No, I, I just, I saw Derek's uh thing and, and, and I am gonna support it, because I do know that some of these routes are crucial. But I think Ripta itself is just a great big money pit. The average cost, by information that was published in a paper, is about eight dollars per trip. Some routes can get as high as thirty-five to fifty dollars per person. So they need to like get smaller buses, you know, I see these buses go by with two people in them. And you get this sixty-seat bus, four or five times a day, it goes by and there's three or four people. They gotta figure out a plan to get smaller buses, maybe some of the non-popular routes where you don't have any passengers for three days in a row. Don't go through there five times a day. Go through there once or twice. People will have to adapt. But Ripta is just so ridiculously expensive for what we actually get out of it. I think it needs to be torn down and done over again. I do understand the need for public transportation. I just think Ripta is a great big mess that needs to be fixed.
Anyone else before I read this whole resolution?
You can add um Rideot to, to, to that, because uh it's been published that, you know, Rhode Island is um fiftieth in uh overall in the country in our transport, in poor transportation. And forty-fifth in, in um quality of our roads. So, you know, we are suffering uh just on a daily basis for the quality of the roads and the quality of the transportation that's available on those roads. And may, Ripta may need some um, a, a, a little improvement or a lot of improvement. But cutting bus routes for the people who need them the most, and for those members of our community who rely on, on, on Ripta, to get to work, to get to the grocery store, to get to medical appointments. All, you know, our seniors to our, our youth, it's just, it makes no sense. And it would be a, a huge um negat- have a huge negative impact on the entire East Bay, on the entire state. If, if um Ripta wasn't appropriately funded. Rideot has funds that come from uh that, that should be going to Ripta. And um I think some adjustments need to be made, and um the message needs to be loud and clear to the governor.
Okay.
I will just add, just to build off of Councilman Hanley's point, um, with, with regard to Ripta. I, I, I think that there's some, an argument certainly that can be made about efficiency and administr- administration. Um, what I, what I would caution, not him, but just caution Ripta, is that um what I've seen happen in other places with public transportation is that when you cut public transportation, fewer people use it. Which leads to further cuts, which sort of starts a downward spiral. So before we get to that, I, I think I agree with Councilman Hanley. We wanna look at the administration and the sort of uh efficiency before we do any massive service cuts like we're talking about. And at the proper time, Mr. President, I do have an amendment.
Amendment would, would you just add it on here before I read it?
It's actually already been added. Um, but what happened was I made a mistake and I was.
Oh, so I have.
He has the copy.
So, here we go. Be it resolved by the Town Council of Warren, as fol- follows. Whereas the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority, Ripta faces a funding crisis. And whereas this funding crisis has forced Ripta to propose draconian service cuts, including elimination of two weekday round trips from Route sixty-one X, Tivon East Bay Park and Ride. And reduced weekday and weekend frequency on the Route sixty, Providence to Newport bus line. From every thirty minutes all day to anywhere between thirty-five and sixty minutes. And whereas, these service cuts will have a devastating effect on the historic community of Warren. And whereas, Route sixty-X and Route sixty lines are vital for the many Warren and East Bay businesses and corporate headquarters that depend on them for transit of employees and customers. And the transportation of patients, staff and faculty at Rhode Island's major hospitals, universities and colleges who live in Warren. And the East Bay area who rely on Ripta. And the commercial areas of Warren and the East Bay, whose vibrancy depends on their customers taking Ripta. And the residents of Warren and the East Bay who rely on these lines to commute to work. And the economic growth and vitality of Warren, as proposed new residential, commercial and mixed-use development relies on efficient and effective public transit. And the quality life of Warren in the Greater East Bay, which depends on these Ripta services to manage automobile congestion on our roads, particularly with the added traffic congestion caused by the long-term replacement project for the Washington Bridge. And whereas Warren depends on the health and vitality of the broader Rhode Island public transportation system. Which also would be devastated by the proposed service reductions. With serious and long-lasting effects on Ripta's daily riders and the communities served in the region. A significant increase in vehicles on area roadways, causing unbearable traffic conditions, excessive air pollution. And many fewer jobs in the region with enormous negative economic impact for both state and local governments. And whereas, investment in efficient and effective public transit linking Warren and the Greater East Bay with the rest of Rhode Island will enhance the economic vitality and growth of local businesses. Educational institutions, hospitals and the quality of life in the region, which in turn benefits the state. Now, therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Warren hereby resolves to request Governor Daniel J. McKee to commit a reliable, sufficient public funding solution for public transportation in Rhode Island that would avoid the devastating, devastating proposed cuts to Ripta. Town Council of the Town of Warren, is there a motion to support such language?
On the, after the fourth whereas, it says on mine, and I thought you read sixty-X, should that not be sixty-one X?
Yes, that is a mistake on my part.
I will make a motion that we change that uh after the fourth whereas, where it refers to Route sixty-X to Route sixty-one X.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then I'll make a motion that we pass the resolution.
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, here you go. Lots of language, lots of words. Hopefully, we'll get support on that. Thank you, Derek, for bringing Warren issue to us.
I pay attention.
Next, we have discussion in action. Identifying townwide streams and creeks for the purpose of obtaining maintenance, easements and an action plan, including cost to remedy flooding issues. Mr. DeSisto, you're up for such a matter?
Well, it's actually uh, uh Councilman Rego's, but I, I have some comments toward it, so I figured I'd just stand up.
Interesting. Go right ahead.
No, no, no.
So, so recently I was copied on, on uh someone's concern about a block rate and flooding, and I went down there and we, we resolved it. But this is an issue that's been gone for a long time. Uh, and I think that, you know, I don't think the highway department, anybody has time to, to really dig into this. And over the years, I think we've gotten a lot of information, but I think what, what we need is a committee uh to pull in all that information and come up with an action plan for the Town of Warren, similar to what we have for the uh Budget Committee.
So we're gonna have a creek and rain committee? Yeah, I mean, it, we also have, we also have five retention ponds in town that Mr. Wheeler can discuss with this committee. I mean, it's, it's a valid point.
Right.
Be prepared for money to be attached to the.
I look at, listen.
Which I'm, you know.
I'm looking for, let's look at the, the, let's look at the, the, the things that we can quickly fix.
Sure.
And let's address the things that are gonna take a long time planning, and you know, we need to be shovel-ready, and, and that's where I'm coming from.
And I, I also told Mr. Rego earlier that we're gonna run it some, like, for instance, the stream behind Warren Avenue, we ran into D E M problems as well. So there are more restrictions than just the monetary.
I, I understand that, but I, I don't think that, you know.
The committee could help identify him and possibly.
Absolutely. And you know, I go to these uh heads uh meetings once a month, and there are a lot of people that, that have a lot of energy to to take this on, and that's, that's why I'm bringing that up.
So, Mr. DeSisto, looking at the language that's here, discussion in action, identifying townwide streams and creeks for the purpose of obtaining maintenance easements and an action plan. So I'm, I'm thinking the action plan gives this agenda item some teeth for us to actually act on the creation of this committee tonight and ask for volunteers.
Gives it fangs.
There you go.
The only reason I'm, I'm up is uh, because I think this is a good idea. Whoever you put on this committee uh should have good research skills. Over the years, the town has had several uh of these studies done for specific issues. So I think what uh you need to do is to have somebody to bring it all together, so that you can start identifying um which one should be taken care of first. And I think that's what you need to be doing here. Don't think you need to engage an engineer uh for these. You already have the plans. You just gotta dust them off and get them out of the fight.
You don't have to put a, a number either, right? So we'll just say we wanna create a committee, volunteers.
That's correct.
So I, I'm looking for a committee of three. I, I think when we have two big committees, nothing ever gets done. I think a committee of three is, is what I'm looking for.
Okay, even better. So, the motion would sound something like a committee of three to look at the creeks and uh.
Can I uh make a suggestion?
Why don't you make the motion?
So I'll make a motion, create a uh three-member uh board to advise the Warren Town Council on an action plan to address flooding issues in the Town of Warren.
I'm gonna make a further suggestion. You should have one member of the Town Council on that committee.
What about somebody from the Conservation Commission?
Have somebody from the Conservation Commission.
There you go.
Thank you.
And I say we put Mr. Rego in that committee.
Shouldn't we put in advertise?
Yes.
Advertising.
Could I add, would this be a task force in the form, in sort of the style that the Affordable Housing Task Force is? Uh, rather than a board in traditional sense?
I consider it to be a working group.
A working group.
I don't wanna make it complicated. I wanna keep it simple.
Okay, I like that. Let's see where it goes.
If that was the motion, I'll second it. Do you remember it?
It was a, it was a. Yeah, you want me to say it again?
Yes.
A motion to create a three-member board to advise the Warren Town Council on an action plan to address flooding issues in the Town of Warren. And to advertise for it.
I will second that.
Well, we have a member of the Conservation Commission as well. And a member.
You know what? Nothing says they can't be on it.
Yeah, nothing says they can't be on it, so I would just leave that out and maybe we can uh.
But what if we don't get anybody? We could always, then we kind of.
Yeah, we're gonna have to look for it. I would just like to keep.
Okay, fine, let's keep it simple. And uh they'll be working, I don't know if that's to be in the motion, but they'll be working in cooperation with Mr. Wheeler, cause a lot of the information.
Absolutely.
Is available and so it's not that they have to go out literally and find these streams.
And again, it doesn't have to be a council member, you know, uh, just like the Budget Committee. I, I attend a lot of those uh things. Uh, so just a three-member board is fine.
Okay, so there's a motion. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. All in favor.
Aye.
Look at that, Mister Rego. You're doing things. Discussion in action requesting Town Manager put in place the Employee Annual Performance Review, also by Mister Rego.
Yeah, so I didn't realize that I I know the police, the police department does the annual reviews. And I became aware that other departments didn't, so I think it would be a good policy for Town Manager to put in place.
Well, I think we owe it to our Town Manager to actually be here to participate in this discussion, so we should put this off to next month, so he has a chance to give you an answer.
Actually, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a suggestion. And the suggestion would be, just as it is on the agenda, this is actually a referral to the Town Manager. If you could make the motion in that fashion, then for next month, he can give you a report as to how far along he is on this.
There you go.
Louis, are you looking for all employees or just department heads or pretty much all employees?
I would say all employees. I mean, I mean, that's something that's typical, that's a standard procedure that you communicate with your employees on an annual basis. I I was a manager, I used to do it every day. And then when I had that annual review and we discussed things that we talked on a regular basis, so I I don't see any, no harm in it, so.
I have a question to the solicitor. What, how do you think our unions are gonna react to this?
I think that's one of the first things that Brian will do when he gets back from London on this issue. But I do think he has to give a report to you as to how it would be implemented. And he would, he would have to make that outreach.
Okay. So, how's the council feel? Where are we going with it?
I'll make a motion, we refer to the Town Manager putting in place an annual employee performance review.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Okay, now moving on. This is gonna be the Lou Rego column. Discussion in action requesting Town Manager obtain cost for employee time management.
So, so this is, and and this is something Gary brought up in his presentation, payroll, part of payroll is having a a time management system that we don't currently have. So, uh, what I'm asking is for the Town Manager to obtain some costs uh, in time management program.
I'm not as, uh, I don't know what this means. Is this a time clock?
Yes.
Well, I actually, actually, we had a very lively discussion at this, at the Department Head meeting. And what was discussed wasn't the old punch clock system. But rather, you know, tying into payroll uh, and and things of that nature. I guess there's some technological advances uh, in this area that need to be explored.
There is, there is in Pawtucket. Every employee, there's a little machine, you walk in, you put your finger on it. It registers you, you push the punch, uh, clock in. At the end of the day, you put your finger on it and you push the clock out. And it automatically reports it to payroll. The department head just, you know, looks at it and says, yep, this this is correct. And then it automatically it's done. So it is time-saving, yeah.
You know, that that's the type of technology I think that there needs to be done here, but again, this would be a referral to the Town Manager to make a report to you as to what would be the best system for this town. And if I could add something uh, right now, based on these last few agenda items. Um, Mister Sullivan is gonna need to speak to his relatives and make sure that they don't have weddings in the second week of the month out of the country.
Yeah, he's in the United Kingdom right now.
Yes, he is.
Who in Alleran?
And that's why I like to have all these referrals to him.
Not in the room.
Payback.
All right, so is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
That was second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Now, Mister Sisto, since you're already up. Now I know why you got up, because you figured you'd stretch your legs first. Request a motion for executive session, closed session pursuant to R I G L forty-two, forty-six, five, subsection A, two litigation participating in the proposed national opioid settlement with Purdue and certain of its affiliates and the Sackler family. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. They need an executive session and that action is required.
And that has to be a roll call vote.
That's correct, yes. For executive session for, uh, the settlement with Purdue, second.
Mister Tromley.
Aye.
Miss Cronin.
Aye.
Mister Handley.
Aye.
Mister Rego.
Aye.
Myself in the affirmative. Next, we have request a motion for executive session, closed session pursuant to forty-two, forty-six, five, subsection A, two collective bargaining, United Steelworkers contract.
Yes, Mister Rantanucci will be making a presentation on that matter. Action is required.
I'll make a motion for executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, aye.
All in favor. Nope, first all in favor.
Oh, aye.
No, you, Mister Tromley, sorry. Miss Cronin.
Aye.
Mister Adley.
Aye.
Mister Rego. And myself in the affirmative. Thank you. Here we go. Two executive sessions. We're lucky. Next, we have action on matters discussed in executive session. Yep, request a motion for executive session, closed session pursuant to R I G L forty-two, forty-six, five, A two litigation update regarding G C Warren Gateway versus Town of Warren. So.
I'll make a motion for executive session.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, we did that one very, very subtle, very good. And number four will be read after executive session. Number five, discussion in action, authorizing the Town Council President to sign an agreement with Woodard and Curran and the Town of Warren regarding the supervisory control and data acquisition. SCADA, as it's known in the industry, system for the wastewater treatment plant.
I I have Mister Himlin on hand to answer.
And I see Mister Camiga in the back. Any additional input and support? Come on down. Let us know what we're.
This matter is budgeted. It's a budgeted item.
Nice.
But Mister Himlin can explain exactly what it is.
I never knew what SCADA meant until tonight.
Thank you. It's a SCADA system is the instrumentation and control system that operates the plant, instruments and controls, monitors what's going on, alarms out to operators, there's a problem. Uh, we're, we've been providing the service to the town for several years now, and so this is a continuance of that service. We update, software has to be updated. Uh, there's various things that need to be optimized. There are things that need to be calibrated. And so that's what this proposal is to continue that that service.
And the cost associated with this is how much?
Thirty-one. It's thirty-one, about eleven thousand of that is for the the software, the subscriptions for the software. So it's about twenty thousand of uh, the service. Uh, we do this on a as-needed basis, so we only the software is a separate issue. We need to renew those and keep those current, but we get requests from uh, the treatment plant staff and that's what we respond to, so you may not need the entire budget. We try to plan, so this is based on historic, so it's on a time and materials basis as needed, as requested is how we we do it.
Mister Rego.
Question for you. Does this software plan, uh, does it provide information to as far as how much water intake, the cost of, you know, product that you use, the the weight of the sludge that's removed? I mean, what is this software?
Uh, the software that's included here is, uh, the firewalls that, because all of this, these systems work over the internet, so there's firewalls for so it includes the firewalls for security. It includes a software program that provides the alarming, alarms out if there's issues. Uh, there's, uh, what's called Excel Reporter that is set up to sort of what you're saying or asking about. It it can be programmed to record different uh, and and report out different data that's taken in from instrumentation systems, so um, it can be used for, it's usually used primarily for like compliance reporting to the state is generally what, so.
And that's why I brought it up, because we don't really get like I I heard the meeting that you had when I wasn't here. We don't really get any data of what's happening out there. We we have a budget of five, I think it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars operated, but we really don't know where those funds are going. It would, it would be nice to have something. But I mean, we can create it, but I was just wondering if this software, is there any information that would be current to us on a monthly basis to monitor the system? Utility costs, you know, costs of the sludge. Do you understand where I'm going with that?
I do, I do understand. We we could certainly work with, uh, your contract operator H two O to help create these, um. I think those reports would be valuable. I think that's, that's a good thing to track. Certainly, I I agree with that. So we could help you with that. Yes.
And when Mister Sullivan gets back, as you noted in last month's meeting and you were here and Mister Camiga, so we're gonna be looking forward to that discussion. And trying to figure, uh, you know, how all the information can best utilize us going into the next budget cycles and everything that we do. Basically, we want to learn how to understand our sewer system.
Yeah.
Not just. And we rely on you for the expertise and the and the
Yeah.
the key information, but honestly, when it comes to us, it's just a dollar figure and what's broken.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we had that presentation a- as far as the grants and the electric cost, but the sewer department really felt it with the electric, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so those are big surprises that, you know, it would be nice to be aware of them.
Yeah. There's another item on this agenda. I can hold my, but I have a comment that's related to that, that I can hold it. Okay. All right.
Okay, so Mister Tromley, please.
Uh, Mister Sisto, you've had an opportunity to review this contract and you're satisfied that it meets all the needs of the town?
Well, this is actually a continuation. This is not the first time we've had this scat, isn't that correct? This is the, yeah, this is basically a renewal for this, this year, this this year. This continues uh, basically the same services that have been done previously. The contract is the same. I don't see any problem.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Okay, SCADA. Next, we have this is request for the Town Council to approve and authorize the Town Council President to sign a grant of easement. No.
No.
Question in action authorization for the Town Council President to sign an agreement with Woodard and Curran and the Town of Warren regarding the on-call engineering services, task order number zero, zero, six for the wastewater treatment plant.
This is, this is for on-call services when, uh, uh, Woodard and Curran, uh, is needed for these engineering things. Mister Himlin will explain exactly what that is and also address Mister Rego's, uh, earlier comment.
And we have what, about fifteen thousand dollars?
Fourteen-eight, I believe.
Fourteen-eight?
Is the max, yeah.
So this is similar to, in the sense that it's budgeted. Uh, it's something that we've been providing as a service every year. Uh, it it's as requested by, uh, the town, by by your operator. Uh, specifically, um, you know, the wastewater treatment process is a complex process. It's a biological process. There's basically bacteria that are doing the work. Wastewater is a variable incoming product that has to be dealt with by your team here. And so, um, you know, things sometimes go outside of the norm and so we provide support to the the treatment plant staff. We have experts that can help them troubleshoot bi- biological process upsets that could happen. High flows, how to help handle those. Uh, so that's primarily what that is useful. We call it process support. It relates to your question in the sense that, um, through this process, one of the things that we've been able to do is improve uh, reduce electrical use through, uh, aeration and and some approaches to that. So I I don't have, I didn't really come prepared to speak to that, but I I could provide additional information on on that. We have some data that supports that we've reduced some of the electrical costs at the treatment facility through this.
We can, we can look at that in the future. Just one question on this, though. It says it max to fourteen-eight, so after fourteen-eight, is it freebie? Well, no, that's, well, the contract says that you've got provided service.
We pay for fourteen-eight.
Up to fourteen-eight.
And then after that, it costs us more.
Than fourteen-eight. Can't, they can't, that's what's known as a not-to-exceed fee.
Right. Do we, do we usually stay within that forty hours per year?
Yes.
If if there was something extraordinary.
Yeah.
Before they, uh, be charged, they would need your agreement to exceed the, uh.
Okay.
Yes. Yep. Yep.
Any other questions?
I'll just ask, uh, same question, Mister Sisto. This is a renewal of the existing agreement, but you're satisfied that this meets all the needs of the town?
Correct. It's just sort of the town. Well, in the past, and again, if something extraordinary happens, Mister Himlin will have to come to you and say, look, we've got this, we need to do it. We need your permission to exceed that figure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Who's making the motion?
I will. Motion to approve.
Who's seconding?
I'll second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Mister Himlin, for coming and
Thank you for coming.
Being here is, as always, helpful. Thank you. Next, we have a telephone poll or what do they call them now? Utility polls. Request for the Town Council to approve and authorize the Town Council President to sign a grant of easement to Narragansett Electric Company for property address five, two, five, Charles Street. What's this regarding?
This is regarding utility poll. I believe it's at the corner of the Kikemut Middle School. That is town property and, um, this is for, um, the polling guy wire. They're gonna do some work out there too. They need the easement.
Does it have to be? Does it have to be on the sidewalk? Can it go on the grass? Well, it's gonna be contingent on.
Refer the matter to the, uh, D P W Director and the Fire Chief.
Traffic Commission.
No, these two.
Okay.
Roy is shaking his head no, he doesn't want it.
I'll make a motion, we request the, uh, we send the request for the, for the, uh,
Yeah, they want more information.
Fire chief, the police chief and the D P W Director for their input at next month's meeting.
Second.
It's, it's been a breach of etiquette and protocol. I think it's appropriate to refer it to them. It should have went to them in the.
Correct, yeah.
I agree. And Mister Tromley made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Here it goes.
Can I just ask a quick question?
I don't know, sure.
On the easement, it says for consideration paid granted. What is the consideration?
That means they're not gonna give us any money.
That's, Lou, that's legal gobbledegook.
It is.
And in this place, consideration means that, uh, you know, for the fact that, um, you know, we have, we have, um, electrical service. That's what it is, but you have to put that language in there, uh, for it to be an effective.
Consideration is the service they provide. Okay.
Next, we have the Finance Director. Come on down, Mister Marshall. You have, uh, fiscally a twenty-four, twenty-five revenue and expenditures. Correct?
Yep.
They're here in front of us. Are any questions for Mister Marshall while he's here?
So I guess, like you said, things haven't been reconciled, so we're looking at something that that you're gonna have to review at a later date.
Right.
And so, uh, it's going up to February. You have another four months. How long do you think it'll take to finalize, reconcile everything?
Um, I wish I knew.
Takes as long as it takes.
It's gonna, yeah, it's gonna take some time. Um, I'm hoping I'm hoping a couple of months, yeah.
Can I ask you something now? Will you reconcile this year's or do you still have to go back?
No, you have to go back, yeah. You need to jump it off on, you can't just stop reconciling without having the prior months reconciled, so.
Any other questions? Are you answering additionally? I'm sorry.
Nope.
Any other questions? Next, we have the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six revenue expenditures. Same answer, same questions? Or what, Mister Rego? Go ahead, ahead.
Oh, no, no, I, again, I, you know, it's kinda, it's kinda hard to look at these reports when things haven't been reconciled.
I agree.
So, you know, I'm not putting him on the spot. I know the job he has to do and, you know, and I'll.
He's not on the spot, so the agenda item, he's prepared for it, he's here.
No.
Uh, I do agree that we need the information when it's collected, it's time for, ready right now. Correct?
Yep.
Okay, so you're working on that. Good. Discussion on report from the Department Heads regarding line items that may go over budget. Are there any?
We didn't have any of this.
See that?
Nice.
That's a good start.
You're starting off on a good foot. Next, we have cash balance report. You have a lot of money?
You have the report in front of you, right?
Yeah.
I I I just want it, dude. You do interact with the, the, uh, the managers or the department heads on a regular basis, right?
A little bit, yes.
Okay, because that's important for everyone to be on the same training on the same track.
Did you have anything else you'd like to talk to us about?
Nope, that's.
Those items or?
Right.
Good. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Don't go anywhere. You're staying. Tax Assessor.
Yeah.
Come on down. So we have an abatement, I see, to the twenty-five tax roll and the amount of five hundred and seventy. So we have an abatement, I see, to the twenty-five tax roll and the amount of five hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-five cents. This is the elderly exemption. This was removed in era. Do you have anything you can add to that?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to?
Can we, what, can we do these? They're all twenty, twenty-five.
Yeah, they are.
All into one motion when she's done explaining them?
You can batch, yes.
Oh, we can.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Uh, so next we have the abatement of twenty-five tax roll and amount of seventeen hundred sixty-five and ninety-six cents. This was a building that was demolished prior. To twelve thirty-one, twenty-four and, uh. That was contested or we found that out with the demolition permit? How'd that happen?
The owner of the next two.
Brought it forward.
Brought it to my attention.
Oh, good. Next, we have the abatement twenty-five tax roll and the amount of eight sixty-two. Thirteen, the building was demolished prior to the twelve thirty-one, twenty-four. Uh, Mr. Hanley.
I will make a motion. We approve three abatements to the twenty-twenty type five tax roll, one in the amount of five seventy-six, sixty-five, one in the amount of. Thousand seven hundred sixty-five. And ninety-six cents and one in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So everybody. You don't have to go home, but you gotta go. We're gonna be going into executive session. After that, we'll be opening back to the public.
Do we make a motion to go into executive session?
We already made all of those.
We already made, no.
I'll make a motion when we come out of executive session and seal the minutes.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye. I'd like to make a motion that we request the solicitor accept the settlement with Purdue and certain of its affiliates as discussed in executive session.
And Sackler.
And Sackler, yep.
There's a second by Mr. Tromley. All in favor?
Aye. And I would also like a motion that we approve the collective bargaining agreement with the United Steelworkers as discussed in executive session.
There's a second. All in favor?